All right then. All in favor of adopting the agenda? Yes? Thank you then. Let's go on to disclosures of pecuniary interests. None. Delegations and presentations, I believe we have Mr. Simon Durin before us tonight, and he's going to be giving us a presentation on single-use plastics. Step up to the mic, Mr. Durin. Yes, do I need this mic? Yes. Yes, for television recording purposes. You're going to be a star tonight. Well, good evening, one and all, and thank you for bidding me a fond welcome. My name is Simon Durin, and I'm the Chief Administrative Officer of Recycle Action and the Convex Group. We are a social enterprise, related business, and we offer employment to those individuals who are mentally handicapped. And one of our divisions is Recycle Action, which is a center of recyclable materials that takes in recyclable materials throughout Hawksbury and the United Counties of Prescott and Russell. And so, we deal at present with about 4,000 tonnes worth of recyclable matter per year. We have a cyroform recycling program. We have recycling of electronic material. We also destroy any confidential documents and shred them. We have about 40 or so employees. At present, I'm sure that you're all aware, at this point in time, there's a crisis that does subsist for the past few months in the recycling industry, and we have many international markets that have closed up, and there's drastic drop in plastic-related recyclable matters. And in Ontario, the culling centers are managed by environmental certificates, and we are unable to stockpile recyclable matter in Recycle Action. We can only warehouse about 200 tonnes, and we have to get rid of those quite quickly. And there are many triage centers that have raised their prices in separating recyclable materials as opposed to those that are not recyclables. That brings me to talk to you now about those plastic matters that we deal with. Generally speaking, plastics will be split in three categories, category one and two. These are transparent plastic materials, such as water bottles, that are readily available. They still have a small amount on the open market, and they're relatively easy to manipulate. Now, plastic materials that are rated from three to seven, plus white plastic, rigid plastic bottles, Jevex bottles, yogurt containers. And I have a slide as to those particular plastic materials of the international material that need to be compressed. They're hard to transport and relatively onerous, expensive to manipulate. And then we have other types of plastics that stem from agricultural practices or agricultural venues, and all other types of plastics that can be found in retail materials or retail markets, such as shopping bags. The major difference between all of those is that the retail industry puts ink in shopping bags, for example, which makes those bags difficult to treat and recyclable. At present, these particular types of plastics have no value on the market, they don't even have a negative value, nobody wants them. And the agricultural plastics, we manage to sell them off, but they're mostly used in cement plants as fuel. It's not the most ecological use, but at least they are not dumped in dumping sites. These plastic materials are difficult to manipulate and sell off. They're very light plastic materials, and they stand the chance of contaminating other plastic materials. And we note at Recycle Action, we've encouraged now, for the past six months, our businesses, well, should I say, our partner municipalities, to make their individual citizens aware of not putting in their plastic bags in their recyclable blue boxes. People, because they have no value whatsoever, but people still put plastic bags in their blue recyclable boxes that they put at the end of their driveway, but they're not recyclable. Now, in the last year, plastic matters from category three to seven, we have a negative 20 tonnes. I had to collect these materials, and I was receiving minus 20 out of my investment to sell it off on the market. For fine plastics, we're not even in that particular dynamics, because there are no purchases for this type of plastic. Nobody wants this type of plastic. Even if we pay for transportation to bring the plastic to be dealt with or treated with, we have nothing. We reap no money out of that or no profits. When I tell you that it's hard to manipulate, certainly in watercourses, of course, this is a type of plastic that floats or that can be found in between waterways, difficult to recuperate. If it winds up in trees, they're torn apart and they stick in branches. Even for us in those recycling centers, we have to sort those out of quality. So if we have fiber plastics in categories one and two with bottles, it contaminates other types of plastic materials, such as this one. So we consider this as pure waste at this point in time, reaping no benefits. Now, actions that are required, and this is the purpose of my presentation, is municipalities have the possibility to legislate, and I believe that Catherine, if I'm not mistaken, will legislate in January 2021. The municipality of Woodstop, cities such as Brumau in Quebec, have announced their intention of abolishing fine plastic materials on their territory. With regards to recycling centers, there's great uncertainty with regards to the provincial government as to their willingness, willingness to promote circular conservation, to implement a circular conservation mechanisms. We don't know in the next few years how the recyclable material industry will evolve. However, good news is that there's very little opposition on the part of industry to oppose these endeavors. Chains such as SOBIS, for example, have already advertised, they're proactive, that they're going to withdraw and eliminate the use of single-use plastic, and they've made that announcement in January. So I think that that's something that's at the doorstep of municipalities that wish to tackle this particular problem. These fine plastics that are found in retail sites are simply sent off to landfill sites and not treated by recycling centers. So thank you very much for your kind attention. This was a quick overview of what the industry looks like right now. I believe that the city of Clarence and Rockland deals with the Sheffield Recycling Center. I believe Tomlinson does that for us. Tomlinson is a client, is Recycle Action's client. But it's a, we're very happy to give you our perspective, our perspective with regards to the United Counties' situation right now. I know that there are some merchants that are in favor of this. LCBO has promoted paper bags for quite a while, because it deteriorates, paper bags deteriorate much quicker than a plastic bag, as well as straws, which are another problem. This is something that will be brought up at the next Chamber of Commerce meeting, and we've mentioned this to the merchants, our fair merchants here in Clarence and Rockland, and we'd like to do very much like Castleman has done, and that is to prevent the use, prohibit the use of plastic bags, period. We don't foresee any changes in the plastic market in the future. Asian products made use of those recycled plastics in the past and sent it back, and North America, unfortunately, does not have the infrastructure to recycle plastic products, and petroleum prices are so low that the new plastic granule is so expensive that there's not even a market for recycled plastic granules. So we don't think that in the coming year, there will be any changes brought about to the situation. Well, it seems as if the recycling industry does not face a very bright future. I think that things are called upon to change. The first thing that my father did with his blue recycling box was to stick it in the garage. Now, we're in the process of telling our children to recycle, but at the same time, we're telling them to recycle, then we're telling them, on the other hand, to say, well, we're telling them, on the other hand, hold on a minute, we might not, you know, encourage you in the future to do what you're doing now. So what's the future, what does the future hold for the recycling industry? Well, the future of the recycling industry, well, the recycling industry has always relied on the export business, and our task was to recycle, to cull, to proceed to a triage, and then export, so that it could be transformed into reusable products. But that market has disappeared. As far as that goes, of course, if I was to strictly, from a private business perspective, this recycling business that we're operating had been, would have been closed six months ago, because we're operating on a social business enterprise basis. So we're able to recuperate plastics one and two, three to seven. Cardboard and paper is funneled over to a recycling center. We have a definite deficit with regards to that, but it's better to send it to a recycling center than to a landfill site. And we hire employees that would have difficulty in finding full-time employment in the day-to-day marketplace, if you wish. So we're not now dealing with technological innovation or price capacity, big or major players as well as minor players. We call everything by hand, and we're all in the same boat, even though some products are separated automatically. We've also discussed, sir, about reusable bags and their impact. I believe we looked into that situation. There are many of those bags that are, that can be reused, but they're not necessarily recyclable. That causes problems. Dolorama, for example, their bags are reusable and recyclable, but in other areas where there are some aluminium that are put in there, put in those bags to keep them cold on a long-term basis. These are bags that are reusable but not recyclable. So if we adopt a policy to remove plastic bags, we also have to add in a policy stating that if these reusable bags are sold, can be recyclable. Not all bags are recyclable. We have to go one step further. Well, to engender maybe a communication with the citizens, Mr. Mayor, well, of course, we're talking about this at present, but so that they would be aware of what can be recycled and not recycled, and the reason why they can't do this or can do this. Well, Mrs. Willet and I had discussed about material bags or hemp bags or cotton-based bags. So all types of ideas, and Mrs. Willet is full of ideas. She was like an encyclopedia that was opening up, replete with new ideas and new concepts. Yes, any other questions? If there's something that you would like to share to our citizens, that you would like to give us from an information perspective, that you would like us to share with our citizens, what would it be? To help guide, to help us to recycle properly? I'm sorry, it might be a quirky question. Well, I think there's a lot of education to, there's an educational process to implement with voters. We can go through social media, the internet, and consumer behavior evolves very slowly. Now, I don't know what Tomlinson takes in or does not take in, however, if you're able to recoup that information and disseminate it to your citizens with maximum amount of medias being tapped in, then that's the best way of doing it. I'm still in the process of discovering the plastic-based universe, universe, if you wish, you know. And to try to pinpoint a particular category to a certain plastic-related product or plastic product is very difficult. And to ask a consumer to comprehend this or to understand this is a difficult task. Mrs. Chouignard, there are some municipalities put their recyclable materials in the same container, be it a black box or a blue box. Now, the recycling center where you're at, is it possible for you to perform a triage separately? Well, we perform a culling in a single-stream manner. Van Cleek Hill does it all at once, yes. We recuperate in this particular fashion for our partners. It's better when everything is gathered together and sent to our center. Otherwise, we'd have to change the manner in which we perform a triage or a culling. Alexandria does it in a two-step manner, if you wish. That's why I talked about this provincial way of thinking right now that imposes a circular type, or is thinking of adopting a secular type of recycling practice that would be blanketly adopted throughout the province. I believe also that at the C A M O, it is the talk of the town, really. I agree, Mr. Mayor, but there are no solutions, really. There's two companies, there's one in Ontario and another one elsewhere, that's in the process of developing a type of machine-based process that will reduce plastic materials to liquid. The United Counties of Prescott, Russell, were looking at some installations. We also took a look at incinerators, but that costs millions of dollars and generates pollution. It does generate pollution. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Durin. Pleasure for us to listen to what you had to tell us. Thank you. All right, any motions? Mr. Mayor, I think it would be important, when we renew our Tomlinson contract, to ask for a price that is separate and apart, you know. And, well, let's wait for the next contract. Yes, because sometimes, well, at this point in time, we're at the process of extending the contract right now. So it's difficult to explain, but the market is quite uncertain at present. So we'll have to go back to council to perform the necessary research beforehand to make sure that the best solution is adopted at the best price. Well, maybe we should have discussions. Well, either we hold discussions together or separate or in a part, this is something that has to be looked at. Well, we'll have the department take a look at this, and then we'll come back with a report as to this later on. Question period? It's fine? None? Let's go on to the United Counties of Prescott, Russell. Well, we received a presentation for Videotron last week. They want to widen their scope. They received money from the federal and provincial government, and we asked for a better service from them. The Larois Forest, some areas were cut down, especially with regards to red pine that's growing and tree illness that has impacted the red pine tree industry. If a tree is impacted, it impacts also trees in 16-foot diameter around it, and government has no other choice but to adopt draconian solutions. There are cuts that are promoted, and some people have complained, because they said that deer won't have a particular area to lie down and thrive. So I know there are some areas in which you're going to walk through the Larois Forest, whether there was a forest beforehand, and now, lo and behold, there are no, there is no forest anymore. But we have to cut down those sick trees so that forest, the Larois Forest, can thrive. Let's go on now to committee reports. Annual programming, I believe, Mr. Bouchard, that this is your baby here. Yes, whereas community services released a call for tenders for the management of an annual program of various shows at the Optimist Performance Hall, and whereas the evaluation process has been completed and the services of production firm has been retained, and whereas community services have concerns regarding the possibility of a potential deficit due to the uncertainty of ticket sales revenues, and whereas community services cannot cover the potential deficit within its operating budget, be it resolved that municipal council agrees to cover the deficit of the annual program at the Optimist Performance Hall from the contingency account, if there is one, and be it resolved that municipal council authorizes community services to conclude an agreement with Productions, P B five, for the management services of five shows at the Optimist Performance Hall as recommended, seconded by Councilor Zant. Questions? Councilor Zant? Well, it's not a question rather than a comment here, Mr. Mayor. I think it's great that we reap the benefits of stemming from a production that compels people to get out of their individual homes to get entertained. But I don't think it behooves the city of Clarence and Rockland to hire a private company and takes the risk to promote those programs. If this company is that good, it should never ask a municipality to take on the risk of promoting shows. The onus is upon them to promote shows. Councilor Chouignard? The risk that we're dealing with, or the result stemming from the risk, we're talking about the Odyssee Room in Gatineau, and they oversee shows, and there's the Schenckman Center located completely to the east of Orleans. Is it because the clients around in this area attend these shows at those venues? Or are we offering shows that are offered at those particular venues at the same time? Or is it a lesser-quality show that we are offering or promoted by this company? I know that the Odyssee Hall is always full. The same can be said of the Schenckman Shows, where audiences are filled, rooms to capacity. Councilor Bouchard? Well, firstly, members of council and those individuals that are from P B five that are here tonight, if we have any questions, we can invite them to come to the podium and step up to the podium. But things to look at are the following. I understand why the services drew up its report in that particular fashion, because there was, there were worries that we had to tackle. And I looked at this report. I understand, however, that there's a risk, but major shows here, Eric Lapointe, Mary May, and Patrick Guroux, those three shows were sold out, and they were major shows. What I'm saying is that the reason that the municipality has to be there and has to give them a helping hand is that we've just hired someone as an economic development officer. We want to have a performance hall that is called upon to be recognized by everyone around. In answer to Mrs. Chouignard's query, the Odyssee Performance Hall at the Schenckman Center are not the same shows that would be promoted here. The crowds would be different. The Odyssee Room is overseen by the city of Gatineau. The Schenckman Center is overseen by the city of Ottawa. There's a reason why municipalities want to promote similar events here. I believe that the risk is minimal, and what's mentioned in the report is that the economical impact is not considered when we promote those particular shows, you know, in our community. We're talking about having people get out of the house, hire babysitters, have supper at a local restaurant. There's a benefit to the municipality to have important events being promoted. And some folks might say, well, we attended Clarence Rockland Performance Hall, and there's the same reason why we are associated with Hockey Canada, C I H. Yes, but we have to think also, is this a hall where artists will perform? Well, they've already performed on three occasions, and they sold out the rooms here. But you see, the services did not adopt a negative attitude. They only gave forth facts, and if we don't come into our money, we have to cover the losses. So it's positive and negative at the same time. I understand, Mr. Mayor, but you can play with numbers as much as you want and in the way that you watch. Those are figures that are quite realistic, of course, that we're dealing with, but major shows in Rockland are, have been a great success. If we're talking about five shows at 50 bucks a ticket, it might not be realistic. And even if we read the resolution as it stands, the resolution alludes to the risk of losing money, risk of losing money, risk of losing money. It comes out three times. I understand why the services have drafted it that way. It's their duty to do so. Councilor Levain? Well, Mr. Mayor, we've been talking about the Optimist Performance Hall as being a performance hall to be used for many other purposes and to promote what I call big shows. And I believe that we've promoted what can be promoted as major shows here in Clarence and Rockland. As Mr. Bouchard has stated, we've had major shows that have been doing quite well. We've had amateur shows that have filled the rooms, were well-equipped. We've signed contracts, and all of the equipment that has been changed at the Optimist Hall, it's worth the committee's time to take a look at this and that the council look into this. Of course, we might incur a deficit at one point in time, even if we perform a market study, we take on risks and we calculate the risk involved. That doesn't mean anything. It could be that we might face a deficit, but we have to go forward and to encourage people to come out. If we take a look at the show in Embraam, for example, there's a country show that was showcased in Embraam, and tickets were sold, well, the room was sold out in about four hours. They have a major performance hall there. I think that shows can be presented here in Rockland. Are you, both of you have your hands up, but I thought you were all tired tonight. Well, Mr. Mayor, it seems, maybe they didn't understand what I stated. There's no one here, sitting at this table, who stated that shows ought not to be promoted here in Clarence and Rockland. We should have shows, but the question remains, should the city of Clarence and Rockland be held responsible if we have a loss? We're not keen, you know, subsidizing, you know, losses with other matters that we deal with, but we're keen to endorse losses if we reap any with entertainment? If everybody says, look, it was sold out here, it was sold out there, well, the onus is upon this particular company to assume the risk of selling out those shows here in Rockland. Let them prove, put their money where their mouth is, and then we'll see, once the shows have come and gone, what kind of results we've had. Where has the money come from? I'll have you say something. Well, thank you. Thank you. Look, well, listen, look, look. There's no doubt that to showcase a series of shows, could you please give your name for the, your name? Patrick Bordané, I'm president of Productions, or P B five Productions. Yes, yes, there is a risk, absolutely, there is a risk. Of course, there is.
Of course, there is. And as a municipality, you're taking an important step that will bring a series of cultural, a series of professional cultural events here. Congratulations. You mentioned that there was Shankman Center success. There was a great success there. But the good novel is that I oversee part of the programming there. I've oversaw also the cultural artistic, cultural program or activities for the city of Gatineau. But there are risks, and I'm sure that Marteng will have something to ask. But this being said, this being said, and what's probably not indicated in this particular motion is this, is that we've established many systems. We've set up many systems to minimize this risk. Now, we've developed this contractual structure involving artists whereby their priority was to repay our expenditures. So we reduced their artist's stipend, and we pay their expenditures. And once the sale of tickets will point towards a profit, that's when we split the profit with the artist. So if there's no profit, then the artist's stipend will remain quite minimal, quite small. There are many solutions to minimize the risk that we've put in, in the request of mandate that we've received when you went to a call to tender. If there is a profit, then the inverse philosophy is adopted. The municipality will receive that profit. I will not. So moreover, you have the opportunity at this point in time for the first year, for the very first year, to develop a considerable impact on behalf of your community. In my request to tender, I solicited community partners to add plus value to the offer that we've given to you. And I confirm to you that the Optimist Club confirmed its sponsorship of $10,000, that it was confirmed about five or 10 minutes ago. At this point in time, we are a community partner that will foster momentum, that will benefit from your web platform, from your publicity. We have marketing and communication strategies that are well-implemented, will tap into all newspapers, will invest in newspaper advertisements and social media, and will promote Clarence and Rockland. So the general objective for year one, we're talking about risk, but in fact, as far as I'm concerned, the financial risk is not as great as the opportunity to implement something important in Clarence and Rockland. You'll have sports events, social, cultural activities, and now you'll have cultural activities. And that is what we wanted to promote more than anything else. We'd have to take a look at the programming as a whole. We can't look at individual shows. Maybe I'm putting the cart ahead of the horse, but the mandate will run from June to December. So as of June, you'll have the exclusive rights to a Franco-Ontarian musical called "Cao." Castleman wants it, Saint Albert wants it. It's a musical. And it went down like gangbusters throughout French Canada. You have your local star Bernard Constant, he's excellent, and in fact, you have a local artist. So we're bringing in an additional element, and we're trying, we will reserve the performance hall the day before, and we have them come in, practice inside the hall and within their lighting schemes, and they're from that point on off throughout the rest of Canada. And then we'll call upon the services of Philippe Bond, a comedian during the course of the fall. Now, the financial risk is quite minimal there. And we're also in negotiations with Arine Pasquet, Pasquet and Adrien Sima. And if that doesn't work out, then we're in negotiations with the Boulet sisters. Now, from a financial risk perspective, as far as I'm concerned, we're in great company here. And then we'll go on with Matt Lang. He's the number-one country artist in Canada. As an opening act, we have TB that responds to the Anglophone community, and Marc Hervieux rounds out, the Marc Hervieux rounds out all of those. I know that there was a cultural center called Saint Famille, and artists were detouring their usual, their usual, were making a detour to play the Saint Famille. And that's what we're trying to do with this particular initiative, is to encourage people to attend here in Rockland. Councilor Zant?
That's great, but what is your risk in all of that? If I have a business, it could be that I might reap negative figures, but the municipality will, you know, shore up what I lose. So I guess I'll definitely lose money. So if we give you money from ratepayers, by the way, I believe you've named Francophone artists, well, Matt Lang also, Matt Lang, he's a country, he's a great country artist. Well, fine. I just wanted to make sure that if we're talking about taxpayers' money, that we have English acts also hired, so you might review your programming. We discussed this on many occasions, but I don't want to pay for it. If you're sure about what you're promoting tonight, so why do you need us to help you out? Well, if I really wanted to make money, sir, I would rent out the Canadian Tire Center or the Scotiabank Place. I'd promote my show, I'd make my million dollars, and I'd withdraw. But to sponsor five shows in six months in a community where there's no developed cultural events for the past 20 years with no demographic data, nobody wants to get into that or get involved in that, honestly. Councilor Schwanier?
Well, if we read between the lines, you're saying that during the first six months, if it's a success, you won't be asking any more help from us? No? No, that's a great question. Let me tell you that our main goal here tonight is to maybe to create a link. I don't know if I'll have the contract next year, but if the foundation is strong and you have a community that manifests strong interest in attending shows, even if I have the contract for next year or not, that's fine. You know, I've at least installed foundations and I've done my job. That's why I call upon ME Foundation and marketing directors. The purpose behind all of this is to create something. I don't even know if the Optimist Club will be existing next, will exist next year. We all have a part to play in all of this. If I wanted to make money in the RFP structure, I would have asked an enormous sum to have me manage five shows. Because I'm called upon to have my team of producers travel from one place to another. It calls upon a lot of work in the span of six months. But at least we're talking about putting in a brick in the wall, if you wish, for the coming years. If it's worth it, that's fine. I believe that others put in their tenders, a lot of, a whole bunch of people that got involved in that. But the advantage I have in all of this is that I evolved for the past 15 years in Orleans, and I can base upon my experience to tell you that people here in Rockland would like what we're offering. That's what I bring to this table. The knowledge of the market as it stands without having a true knowledge of the market based on concrete facts. When we're talking about 150 sold tickets or 250 tickets sold in the past... Well, in the past, I believe that you have a history of, I'm sorry, not 250, but you sold 500 tickets. If we're talking about, let's say, 380 or 365 or 380 tickets sold, you're not incurring any losses. Usually, on a national basis, rooms are filled to the tune of 68% with regards to cultural and artistic events. Now, I believe that we stand in the average of all of those throughout Canada. Now, financial risks were calculated, tabulated, in keeping with those averages. If we take a look at the municipality's role, we have an important role to play with regards to cultural events. We're quite ready, we stand ready to give money, to help out with things that are happening at the arena or with hockey and stuff like that. But when we have artistic events, where we have a small amount just available for this purpose. You know, if we have a hockey arena, we can make use of it for something else other than just a hockey arena. We just want to be on the map also, but not just for a hockey player that once played here, but we want to be on the map also. We want to be recognized for our cultural endeavors. The major thing that we have here is that we called upon to promote our municipality through a cultural mandate that's conferred upon us, you see? Even though I run the risk of losing $10,000 a million, it's still a mega investment without tabulating all of the economic benefits reaped out or side benefits reaped out of the promotion of these particular events. It's about time now that we're called upon to be a leader in all of this. Culture is important for us and our municipality, and it's important to say, well, to pinpoint who will attend those shows. And it's clearly within our mandates. Arts and culture, I'm sorry, here in Clarence and Rockland, we're lagging very far behind in promoting arts and culture. Councilor Caldarelli? You know, we can't have two speak up at the same time. Just to clarify, this $10,000 sponsorship amount that you've received, is this a top-up amount that will help you to fine-tune your programming to obtain higher-quality artists? Or does that reduce your risk of loss?
Well, it's squarely in the price that is handed to municipalities. I took a municipality. I took a chance in my tender. If I obtain $10,000 from my shows, I will put in this $10,000 in the butt to help you offset any losses you might incur. Another question. How much would we have approved in the budget? I believe it was $50,000 with regards to income and $50,000 with regard to expenditures that were earmarked for our annual programming of cultural events. So if the room caters to the needs of high-caliber artists with a $50 ticket price attached to it, would some artists say this room will not meet my requirements? Are we limited quality-wise to some shows that would be offered to our population? Let me tell you, the artists will look at the size of the stage and the quality of lighting, of the lighting system. So we're called upon to, if we ever fall short of any artist criteria, to shore up what falls short of their expectations. For example, the Christmas Marc Hervieux show, we negotiated one piano and not a complete orchestra. We have the same magic involving this well-known piano player, Marc Hervieux, without an orchestra attached to it. So that's how we would proceed with everyone. If we take a look at the River Festival each and every year, we take a risk each and every year. This is a festival that we sponsor. It could rain all throughout the weekend. We don't make a whole bunch of money out of this, but I think, given the Optimist Performance Hall, even if it rains or if it snows, people will get there. When the sun is out at the River Festival, we have a super show with the music playing here, there, and everywhere, and people are always there when we call upon them to attend those events. I think it's great. Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I'm adding my voice out of the wilderness. I understand what Mr. Zant states, and I understand those risks that are associated in that. Now, how much money, Mr. Bouchet, have we invested in the Optimist Hall? Are we talking about $100,000 right now? Well, we have a room at this point in time at the school that is used as a lunchroom at present more than anything else. And if we want to stand out in one way or another, in one fashion or another, we have to come up with something unique. The municipality and the department has, both do not have the resources to do something on their own. It was clear from the get-go. However, we have, I think, I think, to try it out this year, at least this year, and as this gentleman stated, help him out with advertisement and promotion. If some of us doubt that we can fill out the room, the Clarence Carnival, for example, organized by the Lions Club, we have a quality show on the Saturday night, and we refuse people at the door. We turn away people at the door because the arena can't hold everyone that shows up, and tickets are sold at $70, $75 or $80 per seat. And that's in Clarence Creek. We're not talking here about Rockland and the rest of our area. I believe it's, well, yes, it's a risk, but I believe that all of our reports, all the communications with our residents we've had up to now have pointed to the fact that we need to do something, but we never know what needs to be done. I think we're trying this out. If it doesn't work out next year, we'll try something out. It's difficult for me to say that I'm in agreement with Mr. Bouchard and Mr. Lalonde. It's difficult for me to say, to agree with both of these good folks at the same time during that same evening. But the fact is, the department doesn't have the manpower to take care of this. You have professional individuals that take care of this, and Mr. Lalonde stated, well, we have to take a chance somewhere to start off during the first year. I'm in agreement with the cultural events that we have to promote to shore up our image. Councilor Schwanier? Do we have an agreement with the Lescale complex that allows us to make use of this room, of this performance hall? Who has priority over this hall? Well, the Optimist Performance Hall is managed by the Optimist Club during the weekend. So the city of Clarence and Rockland has priority over... Are theater, are plays also sponsored there? Yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Your stage is big enough and at this point in time for a large technical setup, we'd set up on the Saturday, which would give us ample time to offer the show then. If we're talking about this musical that I was alluding to, you can, we can host two shows if we want to dream in future years to add additional shows, additional shows. We have theater plays. We have plays that are quite successful being set up here, there, and everywhere. Let's start up with music, Mrs. Schwanier?
No, I'm thinking, Mr. Mayor, because we're overbooked as things stand. The reason I say this is that we have an older population, and often plays will draw in more customers than musicals. Well, I believe that, yes, any other question? One last question, Mr. Mayor. Is that a promise? Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's a promise. Now, given the report that was forwarded to us highlighting the financial impact, and we're talking about from a monetary and many other perspectives, we might look at a $29,000-plus deficit. When we're saying a monetary and material-based deficit, what do you mean by that? Well, it all depends. We have no contract signed with the show's producer. It all depends on the artists that will take over the Optimist Hall on a given night. If these artists require equipment for special lighting, for example, well, then this might call upon supplement, additional spending. This amount is for the whole of the five shows that are being promoted? Yes, for the five shows, for this set of five shows that is being promoted, that are being promoted. A contingency fund, if you wish, Councilor, I'm sorry, Mr. Dinwiddie?
Well, necessarily what we're dealing with is not a deficit-type situation here, but if there was a deficit situation, normally, you know, there's a $50,000 amount that's budgeted normally in those circumstances. Well, thank you, Mr. Bourdonnet. Thank you then, sir. I believe everyone is in agreement?
I believe everyone is in agreement? Yes, everyone is in agreement. We just wanted to be reassured as far as the risk factor involved is. Councillor Lalonde? As long as, this is, this might be deemed a discretionary amount then. That's fine.
Yes, Mr Mayor, whereas the city of Clarence and Rockland received an amount of $10,000 from the United Counties of Prescott Russell to cover certain costs for municipal cultural and recreational activities, be resolved that the committee of the hall hereby recommends to municipal council to accept that the amount of $10,000 be granted as follows. $5,000 to the Ottawa River Festival, $3,000 to Canada Day celebrations, $1,000 for artistic endeavours such as art exhibits at the city of Clarence and Rockland and recreational complex, and $1,000 to the Clarence-Rockland Senior Games as recommended. I'd like to second that, Mr Mayor. Any questions? All those in favour? Carry then, thank you. Let's go on to the next bylaw, amendment to the Site Plan Control Area bylaw. Item 9.3.
Whereas council wishes to secure small-scale residential infield development, intensification and redevelopment within the urban area and villages, and whereas three-unit dwellings have effectively been discouraged as a result of Site Plan Control bylaw, which allows residential development of two units or fewer to be exempt from Site Plan Control, and whereas recent changes to provincial policy regarding second units have had the effect of rendering it positive to have three or four units on a single lot without the construction being subject to a Site Plan Control. That the committee of a hall recommends council adopt bylaw, modifying bylaw 2018-22, the Site Plan Control Area bylaw in order to exempt three-unit dwellings, townhouses with three dwelling units and bed and breakfast with three or fewer lodging units from Site Plan Control.
Seconded by councillor Zant. I'd just like to mention when you read the resolution, it's always advisable to read it in French. If we read it in English, it's not translated in French. Well, I represent my English constituency, so I'm going to read both when the time calls upon me to do this. It's, I just wanted to make sure the translation is not there for Francophones. Do you have any questions, councillor Chouagnan? No, I just wanted to make everyone aware of this. Any questions? All those in favour? Carry then, thank you. Item 9.4. Councillor Zant. Whereas there has been severe flooding in 2017 and 2019, and whereas South Nation Conservation Authority is predicting that there has been as much snow as last year, that the committee of the hall recommends that council approve the proposed plan for 2020 should flooding occur, as outlined in Report Admin 2020-04. Seconded by councillor Bouchard. That's quite a depressing situation, isn't it, Mr Mayor? Well, you see, the fact is, is that we have to determine whether or not the province is going to pay out funds stemming from the disaster fund that was set aside. We haven't received any money from last year's situation, from last year's catastrophic situation. If, if this happens where we don't have enough money, we're going to have to, you know, implement cuts somewhere because we can't allow us to pay over and above $1 million as it cost last time around. People will have to either raise their homes, as some have done, and we've done our part. We've eliminated building permits, demolition permits and even permits to go to the landfill sites. And when I attended the Ottawa meeting, I'd asked that $50,000 be given to those residents that were raising their houses as a one-shot deal package. And after that, well, they'd be held really liable. That, that was, that was not implemented, it was not voted in. So we'll see what happens. Even the, those sandbags, we know, those who know that they are at risk should foresee what's going on or should, and stock up on sandbags. Their citizens have to take responsibility for the property that they own. All those in favour? Fine then, thank you. Item 9.5. Councillor Zant. So I'll just read it and if we accept it as read, we will adopt it at this meeting and not move it to the regular meeting of town council. That's right, for further ratification. All right. Whereas community services have been mandated to present a recommendation to municipal council regarding the request for technical support from Ligis Lurac for the organisation of the duo race. And whereas the proposed duo race project be integrated into the programming of Saturday, July 4th, 2020 of the Ottawa River Festival, and whereas the city has adopted policy LOI 2014-01, a non-profit organisation, enabling community services to work in concert with NPOs in order to, my God, I have a hard time reading this resolution, to offer comprehensive activities and services to the city's citizens. Be resolved that municipal council accepts that the duo race be integrated into the programming of Saturday, July 4th, 2020 of the Ottawa River Festival, and be resolved that the municipal council authorises community services to support Ligis Lurac in the organisation of the duo race by offering them technical and material support as detailed in policy LOI 2014-01, non-profit organisations. And that the committee of the hall mandate the municipal council authorize community services to conclude an agreement with Ligis Lurac for the organisation of the duo race. Seconded by councillor Bouchard. Questions? Mr Irwin, we discussed this matter this morning. For the benefit of council, could you please explain to us about two potential courses that were to be run? One proposed by the duo organisation and one proposed by the, by us. So what's the difference between costs of both scenarios? Certainly, Mr Mayor, following the presentation of the duo project, asking the, our support to block certain streets during the running of the race, I have discussed with Mr Leonard, what would be possible on our part to implement, to ensure the safety measures that would ensure safety for everyone taking part in the duo race. We proposed a different project that was proposed by Mrs Barret when she appeared before council, talking about the duo race two weeks ago. And we proposed an alternate route, if you wish, that would be easier to control and implement. All associated costs would be paid out by the partnership instead of the municipality. Is that different from other events that we oversee? I know that usually the city of Clarence and Rockland helps out in similar type events. Well, for example, the Terry Fox Walks or the Valoris Mental Health Walk, don't call for the closing of streets. These races can be run on sidewalks, but this one cannot. There are, there is support from police and from town employees, but what would be the cost, though? It depends on the course they're going to run. We might call upon a contractor to get involved for material that is needed because unfortunately we might need in some stretches of this race course, or should I say this race course, there is this course, some material that might be special to be put in. But this component might be paid by the group and not the municipality. For example, if we need beacon light, if, well, beacon light would absorb some of the fees, supplementary fees adopted or included with all of this. And Mrs Barret is in agreement with this? Yes. We've received cost averages from the community service group, but there's another course that won't necessitate as much material as was required by the initial request. All those in favour then? Carry. Well, that's fine. I think that everybody's in favour as far as that goes. Well, that's fine. Other items? If you have any questions for department heads, councillor Lalonde? No, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Sima?
Fire station Borget, are we having any issues or finishing up?
The issue in Borget was the general contractor had not yet installed the ice curts on it as we've in Rockland, that ice overhang now as a result of the winter accumulation on the roof. I had to keep a health and safety concern and ask who was down there working to resolve that and get the ice dams installed.
Another question for you, the lights on the fire station in Borget again for the CRFT logo, when is that going to be installed?
I know it's on the deficiency list, I have to check and see exactly when, but I know it has been noted and that is in progress. If I recall correctly, the electrician was waiting for the right mounting fixture that will mount against the contour of the steel side.
Thank you.
Now that we, sorry, for the whole bus lines now, there was a resident that asked a question about parking lots. What, are we still the ones who are responsible for the, for the parking lots, specifically the one at the church when there are funerals and they're closing it up? What are options for residents?
Normally, they're allowed to leave, prior to the event, and we have to spot the parking lot at the Jean-Marc Lalonde Arena that they go park there if needed. Right now, there's hardly anybody using it. They all try to park at the church or...
Is there a stop sign at the, at the arena as well?
Yes, right across the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr Calderelli? Mr Zant? Just to continue on with what Mr Bouchard had tackled at the parking at the Jean-Marc Lalonde establishment, we still have a parking situation there, of course. We're talking about the same ward-related area here, but I know that one of the stores that gave us letters advising council that cars parked there will be towed away. These are not services that we offer anymore, but we still have challenges to meet. Yeah, those challenges. These are services that we, we hold a certain degree of responsibility over and overseeing power over. Yes. I believe there are five or six venues, well, five in the morning, six at night. Well, the United Counties of Prescott Russell are not called upon to resolve this situation? No, no, we're not talking about the same matter at all. Councillor Chouagnan? No, fine, that's fine. Councillor Leonard? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr Leonard? Good work by removing the snowbanks and cleaning up the snow that it was, that fell down hot and heavy, or should I say cold and heavy and, thank you. So adjournment is called at this point in time at nine, nine o'clock, nine, 9:06 PM? Thank you, folks. Good evening, one and all. Good evening, everyone. Mr Leonard had an easy task tonight.